Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, so I'm going to call this City Council meeting to order. It is September fourteenth, and if you will all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Hey, Glenn, how you doing?
All right, get my business done.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will do roll, and as I recall, going back over my notes, Councilwoman Kestie requested that she be excused for this meeting, so we have her excused, and I'll just go down the line. So, Councilman Owen?
Yeah.
Thank you. I just need you to say it for the record, that's all. Councilman McGoffin?
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilman Allen?
Present.
Thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
Thank you. Okay. Looking for an approval of the agenda, but before we do, we would like to poll item, this is the first unfinished business, it's item 2022 Comp Plan. Off your agenda tonight, there's some housekeeping items that we need to take care of before we present it to you. So whoever makes the approval, if you could include that, pulling the comp item off the item, off the, off the agenda would be great. Boy, that was really clear, wasn't it? Off the docket.
Madam Mayor, I approve the agenda, removing item one of the unfinished business.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right, so we had a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Owen, with stipulating that the 2022 Comprehensive Plan docket amendment will be pulled from this particular agenda, and it'll come back to you on the twenty-eighth. Any discussion or questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you. Looking for a motion for the consent agenda, items one through three.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. There is no special guest tonight, so we will move right into the City Administrator's Report.
No report this evening, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Going down the line then, Councilman Owen, any?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
All right, Councilman McGoffin?
Just one item this evening. There's a big construction project starting in Ward One, so if you're going down F and S, the new development is starting to go in, so just be mindful of new trucks and traffic.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Allen?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd like to give two call-outs to Serena in your office and Jeff Moody out at the cemetery for making really some nice humane gestures towards myself and my cousin.
Oh, very nice. Thank you for sharing that. All right, thank you. And Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was just two things, maybe three. There was, somebody had mentioned that over at Hell's, where we have the burger stand, which is really awesome. The traffic that goes up to line that up can be pretty intense sometimes, especially during festivals, and they were wondering if there's anything the city can do or does to help inform them that the, that people can't just block traffic as they're waiting to get served. I said, "I'll bring it up and mention it." The thing is, is that with the businesses, I have been going out and it started to get with them, but yes, last week around Monday, I wasn't feeling good, so I decided just to hold back and not go forward with that. So, but I have gotten some good feedbacks, information I'll get with Brendan and relay that to you, and then we'll see about.
Yeah, I saw the email. It was very good. I appreciate the fact that you guys went out and made those connections, but I, so are you asking a question of the chief or regarding?
Yeah, the chief, yeah. Do you know anything about that, or have you heard, has anybody complained about that before?
I think I've just seen the email that you got before. Yes, we have had some of those complaints before. Can't recall when, but a while ago. Yeah, it does back up there, and I know the employees from Hell's driving, and I've been in there, and they've along the side of the road sidewalk, I know they've come to the passenger side. I haven't seen them from the driver's side.
I'm not sure. It does seem like it does block the road. I haven't been personally impeded by it, but I did mention that I would mention if we were blocking the road, probably not a great idea.
Yeah, your lunchtime hours, yeah, probably busy, right? I would say best, best bet is to talk to them, and they'll probably resolve it.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Anything else?
Is that something that I would do, or is that something that?
I can make a request, yes. I can, I can contact them.
Sorry, turn that off. I can stop by and speak, and just chat with the owner, and see if there's anything we can do to spirit that. Yeah, awesome. But yeah.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple things. So at our 911 board meeting today, something was brought up that I know that they would like information disseminated, and maybe you can actually share this with your constituents at any point if you talk to them. But there are times that people dial 911 by mistake, and when they do that, they hang up. Well, the 911 staff does have to call them back, so they would prefer that if you call 911 by mistake, hang up, hang on, hang, hang on the line, so that when they answer, you can say, "I dialed by mistake." They'd appreciate that. It would expedite time, and it'd make it easier on an already overworked staff there. So, the other thing that I want to bring up is, the Skagit County, we're preparing for a possible temporary solid waste facility closure, and this is due to the railroad strike that may be looming. Margot Gillespie, who is our Solid Waste Division Manager, said that we've been experiencing a lot of disruptions on the rail service and container shortages since January of 2022, and I think we're all aware of this. Skagit County is working with neighboring cities and with the railroad itself to try to resolve this issue, just to make you aware. And there is a possible nationwide strike that could affect more than 100,000 railway workers. So, just something else that will probably create more shortages, but I, maybe you've already heard this on the news, but if you have not, just to be aware, it's something that I think we're going to have to deal with, not just as a community, but also as a county and a nation. All right, moving on. We will go on to, let's see here, oh, there was a proclamation. Let me read the proclamation, and we'll move on to our business. So this is a proclamation of the City of Cedar Woolley on September fourteenth, 2022. Puget Sound starts here month in Cedar Woolley, Washington. Whereas we resolve to protect Puget Sound and its tributaries, which are a source of our community's well-being, health, economy, and quality of life, and whereas we acknowledge that we are on land of the coast Sahalish, and we are stewards of this land for time immoral, whereas the health of Puget Sound is declining, the creatures, the plants, great and small, from our bollkelp forests and salmon to our orcas, shellfish, and creatures are at risk from the human impacts of stormwater runoff, loss of natural habitats, and the changing climate, and whereas all have the power to protect our Puget Sound treasure, work together to discover and take clean water actions through the Puget Sound Starts Here Campaign, and whereas in the month of September, the City of Cedar Woolley will join with other governing bodies, organizations, community groups, to strengthen the stewardship of our shared watershed and encourage all to take action and improve the health of Puget Sound. I now therefore, Julia Johnson, Mayor of Cedar Woolley, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 Puget Sound Starts Here Month in Cedar Woolley. I urge residents to support clean water and healthy habitat by joining me in the special observance and discover how to make a difference as part of the solution. This is dated September fourteenth, 2022, and I thank Puget Sound Energy for sending this to us and making us aware of this, and I know that you're all very conscientious of our environment and want to see it taken care of. So, that is the proclamation for this month. Moving on to public comment. Do we have anybody on the line for public comment? It is 6:10. If we do, please give your name, your address, and try to keep it to three minutes. I don't know, Bill, is there anybody there on, on the line that maybe I'm not seeing on my screen?
No one is, that I see.
All right, thank you. All right, here in the chamber, is there anybody who would like to make public comment? Name, address, and keep it to three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Philip Murray. I live at 401 West Woodworth. You folks are going to go into the office over there and have an executive session to buy some?
The microphone's not on.
Not my deal. You're going to go in there and have an executive session to buy property? Well, nobody knows what this property is, so I'm telling you, don't buy it. You did this once, and you came out and you bought the Iron Skillet property. You would have had hundreds and hundreds of people saying, "Don't do that," if they had known about it. It needs to be open to all the people, what you're buying. It's just ridiculous. You can just do it, and then what's the consequences? What's the neighbor, what happens to the neighboring people and stuff? You need to redo that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? All right, seeing none, it is 6:11, and I'll close public comment. We will move right into unfinished business. Item one has been pulled from the agenda, so item two, the City Council's strategic goals. And Mr. Bush, I believe this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. And council, we've had a lot of discussion on this topic, so really, at this point, on the second read, just looking for any questions from council, and if there's a motion to approve the council's strategic goals, which is the first detachment there, that would be fantastic.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bush? Okay, hearing or seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll put a motion forward to approve the strategic goals.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to move ahead with the staff recommendations to approve the City Council's strategic goals. Any more discussion, or any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to new business, and this is a first read, so no action is required, and it is ordinance 201922, the Union Cemetery Municipal Code update. And I believe, Mr. Freiburger, are you going to do this one? It's, it's, it says, it's from Nathan's Public Works, so I'm not sure.
Yes. So I've reviewed the, the change proposed. They were prepared by Nathan Salsina and with Nikki Thompson's assistance or review, and Nikki can probably speak better to any details on that than I can, but basically, it's a, it's a major revamping of the ordinance relating to solid waste and, I'm, I'm sorry, cemetery, and it, that's about all I can say about it, to be honest with you.
Okay. Ms. Thompson, do you have anything you want to add to this?
So I'm happy to take any questions that, that people may have. Otherwise, it is a complete rewrite of the cemetery code that we hope modernizes the processes and the definitions, and puts in place something that is more user-friendly.
All right, thank you. Are there questions? Yes, Councilman Allen?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is kind of hitting near and dear to me, so I perused it very carefully, and it just makes a lot of sense to update everything. I don't know what codifies means, but, other than probably to meet city codes, but I read it very carefully, and I never found anything onerous in the.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anybody else? I, I just have a question. So I notice under, it's actually on page six, two, or two, six, two, it's item 28020, the admission to cemetery, and at one point, it says, number one, children are not permitted on the premises unless they're accompanied by an adult or supervised. And I think it might be beneficial if we specify age, because I think people might be confused. Do we consider 12-year-olds okay to be there on their own, or do they need to be supervised? I'm just wondering if we could specify an age.
Certainly. Typically, I would assume that, that a child is anyone under the age of 18, but I'm happy to put an actual age in there at whatever ages you would suggest.
I don't know if that's important to the council or not. You know, if so, I think Nikki would appreciate your input, but it was just something that, as I read through it, it was a question that popped into my head. What, what defines a child? Is it age eight, age 12, age 15?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I would suggest 12 or younger. You know, I can see children going in there to visit a parent or lost loved one, a grandparent, or something like that. I don't think that we should, should stop that, you know? I mean, you're going to find older people or younger people, and they're possibly vandalizing or doing things they should do, all the same, but we shouldn't restrict people from being able to, we're mainly looking at, like, should kids be in a cemetery by themselves at that old?
Okay.
I don't know. I was actually, I lived across the street from, or right behind a cemetery, so I would go out and play in it at, like, nine years old or whatnot, but.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Diamond?
I would agree with Councilman Lavaca in that. I think that most people that are going to go to the cemetery are going to, to pay respects to a loved one, and I don't think that we should discriminate by anybody that is, would be responsible enough to be able to walk there and, and go visit and to do that. 16-year-olds can drive and may take siblings and go pay their respects there as well. So I would agree, it's, it's starting with, if we're putting an age on it, 12 and under.
Okay, thank you. So, go ahead, Councilman Burns?
I'll agree with both of them. I think that's a good age.
Okay. Yes, okay. I'm getting a thumbs up. How about you, Councilman Allen? 12, 12 or under would define a child?
We can amend it to that, yes.
Okay. All right, so I have six head nods here. Nikki, is that possible, just to make that definition, define what, what that would be?
Yes, absolutely. I'll just add the words 12 and under, children 12 and under.
Nikki, I have a quick question, too.
Sure.
What happens if someone, you know, 12 years old gets injured or hurt on their property alone?
So that's a very, a very fair question. Typically, unless the city has done something or left something that is obvious, it, it should have immunity in that situation. And again, you know, it's sort of assumed that, that children under the age of 18 are under the control of their parents and are, and are only doing things that they're allowed to do or given permission to do. Not that I actually think that that's reality, but that's what's assumed. So theoretically, the city should have significant immunity unless there is some sort of latent defect or hazard that the city is aware of.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you, Nikki, for making those changes, and I'm, I'm assuming this will come back to us on the twenty-eighth, correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay, moving on to item number two, the renewal of inter-local agreement with Skagit County and Community Court. This is a first read, no action is required. We did hear from Community Court at our last council meeting, at the strategic work meeting. Mr. Bush, are you going to take this one?
Absolutely. And yeah, the, this item and the next item on the agenda were presented together at the work session last week, and we had resources here from both the county and from our municipal court, both the judges. This particular item for Community Court really doubles the number of dockets on a monthly basis, slightly raises the, the fee for those dockets, and I'm not a subject matter expert, certainly in Community Court, but I'm happy to run down any further questions the council may have, and can talk about the fiscal impact from the city's perspective.
Okay.
Thank you. I did have a question, if that's all right, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Last week, my hand didn't, didn't get picked on, but it was one of the things of, how many are we seeing each, each month that are actually, or even throughout, on an annual basis, that are getting reformed? You know, even one is really good, to tell you the truth, but just get a number on seeing how many people have, have actually turned around and don't go forward into the actual system.
Okay. We'll see what we can run down on that.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Do you just want to jump into the next one as well?
Absolutely, I can do that. So the next one, similarly, is a renewal of an inter-local agreement with the county, and this one is for probation services. And you may recall that this, the rate for probation, probation services doubled. The reason for that, that was mentioned by Judge Howson, is that the rates hadn't changed in many, many years. And so this is a necessary service for the city. We don't, we don't have a tremendous load of, of probationary clientele, and so it would not make sense necessarily to provide the service in another way. So we're recommending approval, but right now, just looking to take any questions the council may have. We can get more information for you on this as well.
All right. Any questions regarding the probation fees? Okay, hearing none, this will come back on the twenty-eighth. Thank you. Next item on the docket is ordinance 202022, amending the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code 1044020 to remove certain parking restrictions on Nelson Street. Mr. Freiburger?
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually a request of the Cedar Woolley School District. Some years back, they had requested that parking be restricted along the north side of their property, above where the gymnasium is on Nelson Street. They found with the number of students driving to school on a daily basis, they're just out of space. They've got problems with parking in private areas abutting neighboring properties, and so they're just looking to develop or have the ability to park more students in the vicinity of the school, and quite frankly, it's not something we've enforced, so they've been parking there anyway. So that's what the background for this is, is just to reverse what the district had, had requested before. For us, it's a simple matter of removing two or three signs, and, and business will just go on as usual.
Okay. Any questions? All right. No action required tonight, that's what I see on the.
Right, per street.
Okay. All right, perfect, thank you. All right, that concludes our new business. We will now move into executive session. Executive session is to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4230110LI, one I, and the acquisition of real estate pursuant to RCW 42301101B, where public knowledge could cause increase in price. Action may be taken following the executive session. And as I understand it, 15 minutes is what we're hoping will be adequate for this, so we will now move into executive session. Thank you. Leaving our stuff here.
Not yet. This is closed session. I'm sorry, this is exec session, the next one is closed session after adjournment. Believe it or not, it matters. Why the state calls things very similar, I don't know.
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Did we know what was going on?
Three nothing after the three batters.
Oh, nice.
No, it was a Levinger. Julio had a leadoff homerun. Francis walked, or, I think he got a single. Came up and hit another homerun. So it was three, nothing after three. Well, you know.
We're in it.
Padres, Padres are a playoff team.
Yeah, they are, they're, they were half game back yesterday.
To lose a game to them is like, okay.
It was, it was two zip. I mean, it was one zip all the way to.
And it's, the only thing we've learned lately is, you know, going into the ninth inning with a, with a deficit.
Well, I mean, Julio gets.
I'm not, I'm not, well, I'm not turning off the TV.
You gotta hit, so it's like, oh, yeah, again.
Oh, did he?
But you can tell, you can tell, well, he got a hit.
In the ninth?
Yeah, last night, last night.
Plus, it was family night. They're like, here we go. Lightning doesn't strike every night. You know, after starting off so, I mean, I wrote the Mariners off after two months, like, there we go. And they've turned into the best team in baseball since then.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of jumped back and watched them, what, 14 in a row or 15 in a row?
Yeah.
Okay, that's something going on here. Because they were back, and it's like, they're still back, but they.
There's still like 97% chance of making the playoffs.
Yeah, won't count your, yeah.
Sounds like a jaded Mariners fan.
I've been there before. Plenty of times it's been so close.
You know, it was the most disappointing, gosh, it's been, it's been several years now, 2017, maybe? They were right on the cusp, and it might've been a little, a couple years earlier. They had a surprise, surprisingly good season, and they went to, they went to Toronto, and Toronto, I don't even think was a playoff team, or maybe they were, maybe they were fighting for the playoffs, too. And Felix was on the mound, and he gave up eight runs in the first inning. What the, and it just, and it just kind of made me think, huh, maybe he wouldn't be any good in the playoffs, because, you know, that's a play, that's a playoff-type situation, and for him to just come out and shit.
I remember plenty of times where it's like, oh, it's August. Hey, they're pretty close, we go, jump on board, and then.
It's been 20 years.
The added, the added wild card spot helps a lot.
Yeah, if this was the 90s, they'd be out of luck.
This is the first year they've had three wild card spots.
Well, right now, they're in line for the first. Well, it's the second year, though, they've had three. Didn't they have three or five last year? I think they had five last year.
Yeah, so last year.
And they still do.
So the three, so now they have six teams that are going in, and they used to have, and I think the wild card is to be the number one team gets a bye.
Oh, so is it, is it going to be again this year?
This year, nobody gets a bye. So this year.
So the, the last two in don't have to play a one-game playoff?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
It's a one-game playoff. That's the way it's been. They changed the rules. You know, they're, they're not going to.
Big bags.
They're not going to allow the shift.
Yeah, that's hard for a lot of teams, like, this could be more offense.
That's the idea.
Yeah. Because the shift actually hurts quite a bit.
Oh, yeah. Well, half the Mariners get shifted on. Probably half of every team, to be honest.
Yeah, really, all teams, right now. Yeah, really, all teams probably not.
So, there'll be a pitch timer, pitch clock. Jeff Passon this morning said. He was asked like. Radio guy said, you know, I'm not, I'm not so sure about this pitch clock thing, I don't know much, I don't know, I kind of like the tension of the in-between pitches and he's asked him if he agrees and he's like, watch a minor league game, you'll, you'll be sold after twenty, so much better with the pitch clock.
The wild card is.
So.
Yes, last year we only had two wild card.
It was only two? But there was a one game playoff.
They played each other and then they played division.
Right.
They played division leaders and the best, best record of division leaders plays four seasons.
Oh, so what are we doing, so this year it's three. So, yeah, you'll have three division leaders, will then play the three wild card teams?
Full wild card team.
So, there's no one game playoffs. I think Tony looks younger.
Best record will receive a bye.
Top two get a bye. So, at this point, it's the Yankees and the Astros.
So, that's a full series.
Wow. How long, how long are the playoffs going to go to November now? I guess they're already going to November, they're going to go to Thanksgiving. Well, you know, that was the fastest city council. Since Mike set the record back eight years ago. I'm going to take it, here you go.
Want to leave it?
Yeah.
How about field, wild card?
What? Yeah, I don't have to be here, I don't need to be here if I'm going to have to be here. But he's not a dancer.
Well, I was kind of going to make him one here in a second because he's.
Deputizing.
Yeah, so you're going to start taking.
Does he even have, does he even have a license, a firearms license? Or is it striking if somebody.
Probably doesn't.
Yeah, he does.
He's got a month left. That's exactly, that's going to start. Five game series, wild card. Could be fun, I can skip, this is, if you're trying to make it, make it a thing.
You know, whenever, when the brochure is over, I kind of, I kind of go like. I would listen to the playoffs. I would step in the garage or whatever and when it's done, they go do the project. Every February, this is my friend in Chicago that I grew up with, she's a White Sox fan, so to text any like, you know. Nineteen weeks to pitchers and catchers report.
Yeah, no, it's. I don't know, the Mariners basically watch them. Well, they know playoffs, they're pretty much.
They try to, they try to get as many as they can at night, because they're long running for night games. They'll probably, they'll probably put, you know, the smaller market teams during the day.
Seattle.
Seattle.
There are trials still in, right, or can't pick?
Yep, that's it so far.
That's how, that's how it turns into dig in is because they'll be playing East Coast seven, yeah, or eight p.m., nine p.m., a little more later.
Eight p.m. game there, then it's five, five. I like five o'clock, like, I don't work at that much.
It could be a five o'clock game over there or seven, before.
The rest of the season. Five. It's on market, I think they were doing seven ten, because seven ten Cairo is their sponsor and now they're gone. Maybe it's, maybe it's six ten, I was curious thinking.
Regardless, if it's not late, I mean, it's quite often that those games go to about nine.
Six ten started. All right, see you there. Last time they did one of these where they bought property because they are in skilled property, nobody knew it, everybody's helped out.
Yeah, well.
They need to, they need to have open government.
I, I don't get to make that decision.
Yeah, I don't, I'll pass the buck there.
Tony?
Thank you.
Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you.
Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you.
Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you.
Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you.
Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you.
Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes. Thank you. Charlie Bush asked that I announce executive session will last another five minutes.